I'd like to welcome everyone out to the special call meeting tonight. We're talking about the business that's on the agenda. We're talking about, uh, there's gonna be a few things on here, so we'll get along with that right now. I've wrote all the papers, please.
Johnny Garner.
Here.
Jerry Low.
Here.
Larry Blatton.
Here.
Al McKinnon.
Here.
Jackie Butler.
Here.
Tim Proctor.
Here.
Ann Ford.
Here.
Russell Flay.
Here.
Buddy Richardson.
Here.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Andrew Hyers.
Here.
Joseph Malaro.
Here.
Barry Smith.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Chris Simmons.
Here.
Terry Bell.
John Wells.
Here.
Mike Allen.
Here.
Seventeen President one.
Thank you, we'll proceed again. The first item will be budget amendments. Does the school system have a budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
Director of the committee.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dave. I'm sorry. Bruce Menzel, the main meeting, I'm sorry.
I'd like to call this through, Mr. Menzel.
Thank you. So if you may say, would you approve of the late mention, please? This mail in discussion question. If not, first say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no. Oh, sir. Thank you, Stacy. You mind if I had a circle on this and get my head on set?
Yeah.
You have that control. Or Stacy, if you don't want to. Oh, thank you.
We have copy of the amendments, or excuse me, copy of the budget amendments, about it.
Good, I got a copy of the amendments. Any questions? Any questions for him? If I'm to hear most of your approval of the budget amendments, so does Bruce. Post paper, Commissioner Garner, signify. Commissioner McKenna. Any questions? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no. Post your take. Okay. Lance, you have any? You don't have any, do you? I've got, what? I've got my dear, I'm sorry. You don't have this committee, do you?
Did anyone say a copy of the budget amendments? We have your in. Any questions?
What is the, oh, wait just a second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Crowe, saying that Commissioner McKenna said. Alright, that's good. Now, is this the page of your document?
Yes.
Okay. What is the phone cards?
Uh, that is something that the sheriff, uh, they buy phone cards and sell. Prisoners can purchase those. And Mr. Weaver may explain it to you better than I can, but we have to pay for those cards on one side, and then they produce revenue in on the other side. So, we, and then it was a success, so we sold a lot more than we, we had. We bought more, and so we got to make more revenue, and amended.
So it's not an expense, it's a revenue.
No, revenue comes in on the other side to cover that. And it does very well, I think.
We live about, uh, somewhere around thirty-two thousand dollars on the phone cards. There's kiosks outside, uh, the jail, and, and, and the families can come buy the cards. Actually, Henderson County and Hardland County have our same phone system. They chose not to have kiosks because it's separate office. But we didn't, and so they have come, Hardland County, Henderson County, buy cards for those inmates. Mr. Prickett, feel good?
The lieutenant chair worker, what is that?
That's the, uh, department worker, uh, part-time person that the state actually reimburses for. We pay their salary, and then we send in the necessary documents to get reimbursed for them. And so I'm making amendments to get it back in the budget.
What about the debauchment grant that's, um...
Yes, that's something that's also done by the state, and the three-star is done by the state also. Uh, the three-star is something that Emily from Chamberlain helps with. Uh, the debauchment grant, though, is mostly for Heather Griffin, tax period, and it's to, uh...
Where's the school bill?
Corney School Bill.
Any other questions?
It's safe to say that most of these are just in wash.
They are, it's just...
The money's reimbursed.
This is a formality I have to go through to get the grant money back in my budget, and we have to spend it before we can actually get it back, and so I have to have it, uh, put back in.
Any other question? If not, first say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no. Post your take.
Thank you.
Next item is going to be the resolution fixing tax rate for Cherokee County at two dollars and fifty-two cents. Take care of that.
We passed it out to most of you. I redone copy of the county general budget. Probably took one thing out, I'm claiming that. What we have, we actually asked the budget committee. Uh, budget committee recommends to you, the budget, if we was mailed out with this change. Uh, change is a eighteen thousand dollar expenditure in the first one to pay for part of the expense for District Attorney, Assistant District Attorney. This is something, well, we felt like the state probably really ought to redo it anyway. Took a recommendation, we put it in, then we found out, put that in, we got to put it seventy-five percent up as a match for a public defender. And it just got a bit complicated, and there's a lot of feeling about it. We decided that was not a good course. And so this amended, uh, document here, which she handed out tonight, did not have that eighteen thousand dollar expenditure in. Uh, so we didn't have to put the other expense in, and that's something that everybody has done, the state leadership. Uh, we have, this will be the fourth year for two dollars and fifty-two cents. You can see it through the documents, it's a lengthy document, it looks like the budget committee can go through it. Uh, I'm sure that there'll be questions and some discussion on it. Uh, I will make the motion for the budget committee to, uh, pass the resolution for two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Would you may say we approve of the two dollars and fifty-two cents for the tax rate for Cherokee County for years two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen? Any question?
I've got some questions about the budget. Is that, does this now do that?
Ask if you want to.
The election commission part goes from five thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars.
There's two, there's two elections next year. Sixteen.
Any questions? Any questions?
Well...
You got one of this, you got one of this dollar in the next one.
Fourteen and fifteen is thirty thousand, and then fifteen, sixteen, it goes down to twenty thousand. So it's that. So what can I say?
We got purchased equipment too. New guy, we got a batch on that equipment. That's the other problem. What number is that?
One ninety-three.
One ninety-three is election workers, you're right.
Under election.
Oh, yeah.
Was it a consensus with the budget committee to present this as the full budget?
Yes.
One hundred unanimous?
Yes.
Does it not concern y'all that the unbalance projected to continue to go down, if it went down? Successive year?
Went down this year because we spent a whole four thousand dollars for drug and solvency. Spent a whole thousand dollars for, as I said, a whole thousand dollars per house, behind the, off. Which definitely lead this year.
Do we not believe there'll be something else that'll pop up this year that contributes to going that even further? I don't think that's ever worked out, but we haven't had something pop up today.
Well, they did before.
Have we got any money to the nursing home yet?
I guess we're confused, we're confused. Got contracts to sign last week.
We're gonna make this, close this money. That money's going on out to that nursing home on these days.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's blowing it out here.
Well, I think blow it, I mean, I think we need to be conservative with it, I think we need to have a plan to use it, that maybe cut down expenses. Down the road.
We're going to the nursing home. Yeah, yeah. I'm sure that's something we'll look at once we get cash in hand.
Did, did I get an answer from my wife on election?
Yeah, was there some... She explained the cause, she explained the cause of the elections coming up, the next year will have a primary, will have a general election, that she needs that money for more employees, that's why it was a twenty-four.
And there's not as many elections in this niche coming up here as there was this past year.
Two successive years, we gave almost a third, thirty-three percent property tax increase. That got us close to two million dollars in general bond. And now it's projected, two years later, we get one point three. We don't think we're gonna end up on that same road. The decision we had to make four or five years ago, it go to three. What, what makes you think it's not gonna be there? We're not, all of our expenses are recurring, they're not, if we don't recur this year, maybe recur the following year.
The way I look at it is, we project what we, sort of like worst-case scenario expenses, and we're very conservative on the revenue. We hope that it's a little better each way.
Hopefully it's working out for us, yes.
And we, we feel like we're actually closer to the same, than what this year.
Sorry, I paid a number person, and these numbers are not telling us the story that we're trying to talk ourselves into anything close.
You think we overestimate?
We need to have some type of point, so we don't get in the same road that we were in three or four years ago.
The letter been due, uh, what you're seeing is that any question, if that's to move, or if it's...
We've allowed that to stress the force, but if we want to make significant cuts, we're talking about asking our local officials to look at their department. Yeah, that's a good decision. But I really struggle with that huge tax decrease that we are walking down, 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 and I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that herb to be shared. It's a micropound of what you see every day in the news. You think that it's not raised on the side here, I think we're just gonna have the same. I just think it's physically irresponsible to see these numbers and not raise it very high.
Do you remember what the estimate of balance was for?
I'm very conservative when I make these estimates. I know you guys understand that, because I've done it for years to try to maintain our front balance and to hold on to it. Uh, so therefore I overestimate and underestimate, uh, bigger projections, not necessarily what's going to happen. That's the only way we have of holding on to our front balance. So, so these figures are probably, at least, we'll probably end up with at least one point six, uh, if something doesn't happen, or even if something does, uh, we will have some also. Well, I'm gonna go there, but, uh, there's some expenditures that we have to take back over the past year or so that we, we have not had, that the sheriff of town doesn't help us out with, either drug fund money, well, that money's gone now, so we have to take responsibility back for that entity that he's paid for as a drug fund for, I think, three years, maybe, four years? Four years.
Everybody has trouble.
So that's one reason that these expenditures, they've gone, gone back up.
We saw that coming, and we're still looking up the bill. I keep hearing words like probably, hold. It doesn't give me a, uh, a clue.
Do you know what the projected was for that, uh, two thousand thirteen, fourteen? Not that much projected was, much more projected was from the actual one?
Um, I think it was what said, or what said about, uh, one head.
Like an actual election?
Probably about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. A hundred fifty thousand dollars is what I usually drive through with, with maintaining that front balance, so, um...
Mr. Mayor, that, uh, that my property that was purchased seventy thousand dollars somewhere in the neighborhood, is it, is it separated out?
Is it seven thousand dollars?
Well, let me ask you, did, did, did that property come off the tax road, or what?
Number three oh seven, communication, not obviously on everybody, is that just number telephone, or what does that cover?
In that, in that, probably, computer code by everybody.
Every office has a sign, has a communication, it's about, been in there over here in County Building. Four thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars, twelve thousand dollars.
We, we have to break that down between each office, uh, according to the building space that they occupy, floor space, so we may have gotten that broke down wrong. I don't think there's been that much of an increase. Getting it services, uh, phones, uh, his PBI, twenty, his line, twenty-five thousand seven here, is broken down by each building and the amount of floor spaces they occupy, and then the value of other buildings, so, uh...
So if you're not, not scare anybody else, does it not give you a reason to pause? Mayor. Hey, hey, you know my person.
I know your person.
It's, it's...
I know your street name.
It's more than that, though.
I disagree with you.
You own businesses, could you operate your business knowing that recurring expenses are going to continue, and it's greater than what it takes you in? That's what these numbers show.
Right, right.
Yes, and if we, thank you for conservative projections, if we're still here, Mr. Judy did just all of a sudden, she started using conservative methods, she mentioned, she's explaining to us, make sure we get our money.
Yeah, what the fuck is she doing, that's completely, you got one six?
They like, should be about one six eight. One six eight.
One six eight.
I'm having trouble hearing you, you're being unsullied.
What you got, you're totally ready?
Mayor, yeah. When Joe talks, makes me nervous. I wouldn't do those talks with the cuts a few years ago. I don't wanna go there again. Uh, I do understand your concern, and Trump others concerned about, thinking five years planning, we talked about that in the past. That's probably not a bad idea. Uh, on the other hand, some of you are commissioners of mine, I understand, or you may, but, uh, the state does not want us to carry tons of the best money. So it's, it's a judgment act each year, the state within that range, that the state audit, uh, entices the state, the state will be, uh, think it's around three months operating expenses. Uh, so, if, the best of my memory, one point three B is not that, that far off from that. I'd be for it hopefully, but hopefully we will, you know, a little better front balance and what's shown in the paper. But that does not make sense to me. It may not to somebody else, that we can agree this way, but, uh, that's the way we've been operating, and I'm comfortable with that. Uh, not trying to try to equalize opinion, just trying to let you know, make a little bit more than, than what's shown here on the budget. So, believe me, Joe, I don't, I don't wanna get back to where I'm at. I, I agree with that. Uh, those thirty-four years we had on the budget committee, that official, uh, we've cut twice, we didn't know we had places to cut, uh, but, but we've worked it, it's a good decision. And, and we, we did make some very difficult decisions, very unpopular decisions, uh, and also this last year, we did have some fifteen, fourteen, fifteen this one year. We did have some, uh, expenses that not going to be reoccurring true, or if it's something else, probably next year. I think we got prudent, front balance, to handle that. Within reason, we never lost, and I think within reason, looked it past. Thank you.
Any other question?
No. I'd like to ask Mr. Moore. Mr. Judy, I know that the hands, not the officials, but the hands that work at the courthouse, they did not get a percentage raise of that. They got, it added to their longevity, is that correct?
There, there wasn't a longevity scale, where we were all on the same level, fifty dollars a year, flat, wherever how many years you were. We did, uh, the budget committee, that, before the budget committee, and they approved, uh, a scale for its number of years that you've served, the longer you've been there, the more money you get.
Just guess, what percent would that be? Would it be a half percent, a one percent, a three-quarter percent? It'd be like a, a little bit, like a, just my, very minute.
Yeah, like where you, where you were.
And, 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 and these guys on the budget committee know, and I'm sure I'm gonna take some people for this, but that's alright, I got big shoulders, I'll take them. I am upset that we're not getting the cost of living. That was a difficult decision, though. And I'm not happy with it. I got outvoted on that. You've got people out here working every day, feeding kids, feeding parents, making twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And I know somebody's gonna say, fixed income and all that, and I respect that, I totally respect that. I'm coming, my time's coming, and I'm gonna be on fixed income. But you got people working in these offices, making twenty-something thousand dollars a year, and I give them credit. I didn't like it. And I realize I can't get everything I want, and so that was a difficult decision for me. If I had my way, I'd give direction. Because I am an employee, I've always been an employee, and I love fields being employed. Sometimes I make people forget how it is to be out here working seven, five, six days a week, barely getting by. I make people forget that sometimes, but that's my sort of mantra. If we made that decision, then we, we sure did. If anybody thinks we did, we should have come to it.
Are, are we, are we possibly looking for the next twenty-four months, if we don't increase these employee salary, uh, are we looking at losing some good balance to people somewhere else?
That would be our mistake, that's a good possibility.
Well, I mean, I know, I know it's happened in the last few years. Yeah. How often?
Started about nineteen eighty-six.
How many positions have been?
Well, I have to, both of them went through, about four. Troy went through.
Have you reduced the number of positions anywhere in the county?
No, they lost good employees, or new employees. And that's just one office. I could take another office, but that's already, you got a clerk, he ain't gonna say that.
So we've never had to duck?
No, but you've lost good employees because they did, uh, venture, because they was not making a cent of the labor.
You would get, you would get... We get a lot of revenue down, what are we gonna look at?
The county's, the county's high, everyone got so many ways to raise money, and I, and we both went through it, we know what it is.
Here we go to raise the money.
If you provide the services, you pay for the services. So let it be written.
Continue, Captain, and the court's office, we're looking for ways to cut. I want to give all the money back to that county and county. I don't disagree with it. Here's a good example, I'd use this example, I'd use the county, I'm just, I've never walked into your office, had to wait, not good a time, not my second. I understand that you're in there five days. I understand, but when you talk about people making harder decisions.
Even, even, even a little.
One person... Pay the tax.
Even a little. One person is sitting or on vacation, who takes off dinners, does it?
Nobody.
Eight men, probably.
I'd like to ask, uh, over to Mr. Moore, a question. You and I discussed very briefly in one of the last meetings, if you were possible, going to make some more funds, uh, to, just to provide the medical services that you're required.
I didn't ask that. When I was told to notice county boards to get a raise, I didn't ask that two percent, two cents, I didn't ask for it. We all just spoke together.
And, and that was another hard decision, that comes Jerry, the first vote was that he was gonna need more money.
Right.
And he backed off on it, and I'm glad he did. He needs the money. I'll say that right off, but he backed off on that. I mean, I, I promise you, we wouldn't all of a sudden in there eating skittles, pumped on that, and thinking it was good old high tech.
If you're taking, looking, not just county business, but all of it, they could just stay focused, well, how many times you go nice when I'm frontin', and you call it, and raise gas, they think, they don't have, you don't have to have more money, you fuck, like you go hard on those, same with counties. And all the stuff used is higher, the food is higher, the basic is higher, asphalt, and ground, and, you know, I want to raise the taxes, the taxes, they were there, and I thought, like, well, hell, I've covered that way, taxes, three years. But, uh, if you still operate, and I think that somebody's thinking we'd raise, and they didn't get it, but, uh, I guess they're giving their part too, but, but still working, and I'm giving a raise. But still, it reaches a point, it's gonna take a lot of dealers, uh, grocery bill and stuff, but the fact that they got insurance now should be a great help to them. But, uh, you're gonna have to take in money, and you're gonna have to put out money, then ain't gonna be the same every year.
Mayor, what's the tax rates of all counties right now?
It's different. Hard to count, 'cause I don't count it out here cheaper than us, if they can take with the person.
Does any, does anybody out there?
I think there's a twenty-six cent increase this year.
That county's open to nine hundred and seventy-five wheel tax on the town. Your school system also just laid off up thirteen, fifteen, anybody? We could be looking somewhere there, get the seven, nine, one, two. I got another question. On the, on the jail, uh, the jailers going from five hundred and ninety thousand to six hundred and thirty thousand, do I address that question?
We, we have the trailer too.
You added another jailer?
We have the trailer too. Also, and that, and, 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 and I may say too, the sheriff did not ask for that.
Well, I just noticed the jail went up a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm just trying to find that.
Well, it's about that, but, maybe that might have been one of the rest of it.
Yeah, they just did.
I just like, well, I said the jailer put that.
Yeah, no, the jailer was just forty thousand.
One thousand is food. We had, we went up on the food, but we, we went up on the food because we're holding more, we want fresh incomes.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry. It went from eighty-three to a hundred to a hundred and twenty?
It went up?
Well, uh, it went from eighty-three, five to a hundred, and, and now the proposed is a hundred and, a hundred and twenty, is it more fresher, or what?
Oh, yeah, we, we're acting, uh, I think they had thirty-eight inmates.
Well, Chris, they look like...
They don't, I mean, we got same effect, but we got thirty-eight inmates over there.
Four thousand, oh, that was make up, this other person's supposed to take up that over.
And, and on the jail side, also, the way it was explained to us, if, if you back up several years, the state wanted us, that we was gonna have to have X, and now, number of jailers. And Sheriff Davidson, and Blair, and several others negotiated with the state, and got a lot lower number, like five or six lower number.
It does, we have to have twenty-four.
Right. And if you maintain a lower number for so many weeks than what the state says, and they will come in and mandate us to hire these five or six extra judges, so that's why he's been working below minimum standards, and we're at the point where the state is gonna, couldn't come in and tell us that we gotta hire five more judges. So we felt that it was more economical to move some money around, of course, we did have to add some, not by trying to hide anything, to move some... Of course, we did have to add some, not by trying to hide anything, to move some overtime money around, add a little bit here and add a little bit there, and hiring one more, because he's all time losing jailers, and people quit, people move on, and that way, the way that we could prevent ourselves from down the road, the state coming in and slapping us, having, saying, well, you've got to hire four or more, more, let's hire one now, see if we can get by. That was a recommendation we took.
And that's the deal, maybe, if the state comes, we work, they, they, they still tell us every year that we need twenty-four, we work with nothing. Um, so I think that we can pacify them for one month, and, and, because if they come into market and say we're going to get plenty of money, we pick it up, and they're going to do sort of that, that, that's it.
They will pay for it, sure.
They'll tax, but, yeah, it's going to come out of the top, same as this. Of course, a lot of that, we, we're the same way, if, if, if the way it is now, with the nineteen, with the nineteen jailers, if one of them said we work short-term, but we have to pay overtime and cover, and score what shift is, week or a little more, nights, I guess, or midnights, but if this day shift is safe, if we have to call somebody in, there's two seats, you can't have that overtime a year, you're trying to pay for it. So we work, we, it's, it's, it's been running since we've been here, it's buried, by, by memory.
And also, I will, y'all got to stop this, this right here, all right? That actually came to me from here. Get this, get this right here, going hard, right here. Is that right?
Our board bill went up thirty thousand dollars, and we'll get back to the state,
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
so it covers that through, but.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Perry Bell.
That's on the revenue side, Chris, it comes back on the revenue side, or from the state,
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
or boarding these state prisons.
Seventeen and O.
What's that?
I have a question for the sheriff.
Motion to approve the solid waste budget for, motion to approve the library, library
Uh-huh.
Were you allowed a privilege to do all the work in the county?
Yes.
budget for fifteen sixteen.
Anything else you can do?
Well, we took it out of the budget, there was twelve thousand in the budget for the
We're going up very quick.
general care here, and, and we did that, and made, there's also twenty-five thousand
Motion to make certain we approve the library, library budget for fifteen sixteen.
dollars for the lax equipment, we do all that with them. We've also got inmate guard and safety somewhere, and I apologize, I, I didn't, I didn't tax
Any questions? Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
them a little bit, I think the guard and safety is somewhere around eleven thousand
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
dollars.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
But I, I think that, that must be send inmates to help them at, at solid waste.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
I know they do a lot of marketing.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
They do a lot of marketing, they, we work them all, we're just.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
It makes us their banking stations, too.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
You have a question?
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Do you have a real problem?
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O. Johnny Garne. Next to approve the solid waste budget for fifteen sixteen. Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
I have a question, everybody.
Al McCann.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler.
Motion to make certain we approve the solid waste, any questions?
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Roll call.
Russell Blake. Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers. Jerry Love.
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson. Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer. Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to approve the solid waste budget for, next to approve the library, library budget for fifteen sixteen. Motion to make certain we approve the library budget for fifteen sixteen, any discussion? I think I was scared about saying close last year, huh?
Pardon?
I was scared about saying close last year, huh? And y'all signed to look last year, on the year.
And a little increase in revenue.
Increase in revenue, yes.
Can we roll call over on that?
We're talking, Jerry.
Call over.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to approve the solid waste budget for, next to approve the library, library budget for fifteen sixteen.
Motion to make certain we approve the library budget for fifteen sixteen, any questions?
Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to approve the solid waste budget for, next to approve the library, library budget for fifteen sixteen.
Motion to make certain we approve the solid waste, any questions?
Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to approve the solid waste budget for, next to approve the library, library budget for fifteen sixteen.
Motion to make certain we approve the solid waste, any questions?
Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O. Before we go further, if they had to make that.
Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to the resolution for charitable contributions for fifteen sixteen, any questions? Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to the resolution for funding the volunteer fire departments for fifteen sixteen.
Make a motion to fund the volunteer fire department.
Second.
Motion to make certain we fund the volunteer fire department, any questions?
I got one comment.
All right.
Now, I, I would commend the fire department for getting ISO ratings, that shouldn't have been a long time ago, but I appreciate the hard work they've done, and thanks to us folks living out in the county, and appreciate what they've done, and that's another hard decision, at some point in time, when ISO ratings come down, for anybody that don't understand that, I've been through that, working for the city, when ISO ratings come down, that means your fire department is better, so that means you qualify for less grants, so a lot of these fire trucks, a lot of this equipment and stuff that the county's been getting over the years, we may not get that at some point in time, but I commend them for what they have done. At some point in time, we may have to step up the plate, and that's a little bit more, they work, and I'm not on fire departments, like, they, they work with very little money for what they did, and I appreciate them.
The insurance agent here tell me that our, that our moderate insurance out of county is over down twenty-five to thirty-five percent.
Yeah, I lose insurance for them. It's one of those, it's just a notification or whatever.
They expect you by first, whenever, whenever you're insured, so you have to.
Almost man keep best, don't let us break up.
He worked hard. Okay, we've got a motion, second, to get the, for the resolution, that the volunteer fire department is unscheduled. If not, roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Rivers.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and O.
Next to the resolution for charitable contributions for fifteen sixteen.
I have a question, everybody.
Roll call.
Johnny Garne.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Here.
Larry Blackstone.
Yes.
Al McInnes.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Ritz.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
John Webb.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen and one.
If I should be a big lawyer.
Well, I had something over here, and it was a motion to approve library debt budget maintenance, I'd like to see.
They didn't have it, no, right?
Yes, it's on, it's on the sheet that we first went over, the first time, it's about a month.
All right, okay. Now, all y'all got a copy of this, this attorney's, in here, if y'all notice, we have to have officers to enforce this. Talking to the sheriff, he said he would get an affidavit, and if it enforced it, we would have to call the police. If y'all studied through this thing, often of course, it's a thing that's on this junk and scattered around the county, it's like a call.
I want to add, about people down in the garbage, I know they're protesting, can they be fined for that?
Yeah, they can.
I think, I think, I think.
I think you have to do, I mean, there's a resolution that you can do, but then somebody's got to force that, you got to have to do it.
How, how is this currently, Ken?
By now, we don't have anything else now.
So if somebody complains about a dilapidated house across from there.[1388.12]